Thanks to everybody for joining. We are here this afternoon to engage in a really important process for this city and one that we know we will only get right with meaningful public input. And so I'm really appreciative for folks agreeing to join and be a part of this conversation. As I indicated, we're going to spend the bulk of the afternoon in breakout groups and then come back and report out on the ideas and suggestions and perhaps questions that folks have arrived at during the course of their breakout groups. But I also wanted to just drop in the chat right now a link to a feedback form. If you are, if you have thoughts or preferences that you want to get back to us that for whatever reason you don't feel are best delivered verbally during the course of this afternoon, we've set up a Google form you can utilize to ensure that we get your thoughts and that we will be happy not only to incorporate them but also to, you know, one appropriate reply. So with that, I want to spend, you know, just a few minutes explaining the question before the city of Evanston that we would really love your feedback on. And the fundamental question is regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding. The American Rescue Plan Act is a piece of federal legislation that was passed early into Biden administration. It's a giant sprawling law that provides a variety of different kinds of financial assistance to all kinds of different areas related to pandemic recovery. And it includes a pretty significant amount of funding specifically for municipalities. And so specifically Evanston is going to wind up getting just over $43 million, which I have to say is for the context of the Evanston fiscal situation, a tremendous, tremendous amount of money and therefore tremendous generational opportunity for us to figure out what to do with. Kate, do you mind sharing the slide that we were, that I wanted to show to folks as we talked through in a little bit of detail what these $43 million dollars are all about, what they can be used for and what they cannot be used for? Perfect. Thank you so much. If you could scroll, I think it's next, nope, there it is. Yeah, I'm not much of a PowerPoint guy, so I have one slide presentation. That's, that's all I can, all I can handle. But, but as I indicated, we have $43 million coming our way, which is, which is again a really significant amount of funding if you compare it to the city budget, if you specially compare it to the kind of discretionary portion of the city budget that's likely to change from year to year. It's really, it's a, it's a significant amount of resource and therefore a significant opportunity for us. Now, I want to say something before we even get started on talking about what could be done with this money. Nobody expects that the federal government's going to come back in a couple of years and offer us this money again. We, we've received half of it already. We're going to receive the next half a year from now and then in all likelihood, that's going to be it. And so when we're thinking about what to do with this funding, I think it's really beneficial if we put ourselves in an investment mental framework. In other words, not how do we set up an ongoing program that will require us to find revenue year after year after year, even if the feds are only providing it for a few years, but rather how do we right now make enduring changes in our community that will pay off for years and even generations to come? That's a different kind of question, quite frankly, than government often has the luxury of asking itself when it's making budgetary decisions. But I believe it's a question we have to ask ourselves right now. So the, the federal law enumerates what the money can be spent for in, you know, pretty high degree of specificity. And there's five items that I wanted to draw to folks' attention. The first is pretty obvious, supporting public health expenditures. And obviously we're, you know, we are, thank God, well into the vaccination process and the, the healthcare system itself, thank goodness, is not overwhelmed, does not appear to be on a trajectory to getting overwhelmed. You know, it's not any longer the time to set up a contact tracing system. But I think it's really important to name the fact that there have been severe, severe ongoing mental health consequences associated with this pandemic, not to mention physical health consequences. And this is an opportunity to, and I think broadly interpreted, support the mental health and social service needs of our community that have arisen in part from the coronavirus pandemic. So that's number one. Number two, address negative economic impacts of COVID-19. You guys, this is broad, right? I mean, there's the most kind of natural instinct you might have is, hey, listen, small businesses have been really harmed by the fact that we've been sheltering in place and demand has dropped and people weren't out shopping and eating in restaurants and so forth. And so we might want to use these economic rescue funds, you know, as kind of grants to small businesses. But there's so many other ways we could, we could invest them. We could invest them in childcare, for instance, so that, so that folks have the ability to have their children be properly cared for and safe while they seek employment or actually go to work. We could invest in workforce development so that the economic recovery is truly broadly shared, including by disaffected youth who have lacked economic opportunity in our community in the past. There's a lot of different ways to think about what it means to address the negative economic impacts of COVID-19. Next, real simple one, make up for lost city revenue. City revenue fell off a cliff, not because of anything we did wrong, this is how government revenue existed across the country, simply because so much of our revenue is dependent upon economic, economic activity. You know, an obvious example, of course, is sales tax revenue. And when the economy came to a near standstill, that had a huge impact on our city's revenue, which resulted in layoffs and service reductions and dipping into our reserves and so forth. And so the third bullet here is we have the opportunity to make up for revenue that we lost specifically as a result of the pandemic. Next, we had plenty of essential workers who are city employees who didn't have the luxury that I have, frankly, of doing my job behind a screen at my house on Zoom, but who rather were called upon to work in social service provision or public safety or, or other areas. And the federal law specifically enables us to enact premium pay, to essentially give a, a bonus for the danger that essential workers expose themselves to while carrying out public services. And the final bullet is infrastructure, and it's not all that broad, it's specific. It's for water, sewer and broadband infrastructure, though the law does specifically name the fact that we can use it to mitigate the effects of climate change. And that's obviously an important part of water infrastructure here in Evanston. So these are the five areas. And so the questions before us are number one, of the $43 million, how do we think about how much money to put in each of these different categories? And then number two, having done so, how do we actually allocate the funding within each category? And especially, and I would say categories one and two and to some extent five leave a lot of internal questions. And, and these are the things we want public input on. So I've, I've reached out on my presentation. The next presentation will be from Kate Lewis-Laken, our extraordinary budget manager, who will give us some city budget information to contextualize where we are. After that, we'll go into breakout groups. You'll have a chance to talk with facilitator for a half hour and then all of those groups will, will report back out to the whole group. We're going to be meticulously tracking everything that's said. As I said, you can also utilize the Google form to send other input as well. But we also want to stress that this is simply one part of a multi-step process. We'd like to continue the dialogue with the community, having, we're going to use the town hall we had last week, the one we're having now and the one we'll have in a few weeks to source as many ideas as possible and then go back to the community to ensure that we're prioritizing those ideas in a way that's consistent with the values and desires of all of Evanston. So again, thank you for being a part of this afternoon and I'm very much looking forward to, to listening and, and hearing, hearing your thoughts and recommendations. And with that, Kate, take it away.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kate Lewis-Laken, I'm the city's budget manager. I apologize for the sort of on and off of the slideshow here, I had to do that to unmute myself. So I'm just going to spend about five, five to seven minutes here going over the city's budget in a brief overview. And I'm sorry, the value of even being in a public building is we, we have our public servants going by with a, with a, start with a loud siren right now. I apologize if anyone else heard that. So just a quick overview of the city's budget so that we can sort of contextualize the funding that's coming in. And again, as Mayor Biss stated, this is an extraordinary amount of funding for the city. So just sort of get a sense of what that scope is, what the financial picture of the city is at the moment and, and how these funds can sort of fit into that, as well as be used again for some of these programs that we haven't even thought of yet. So just a quick note that when we're talking about the city's budget, we use the terms funds and departments a lot. So I always like to, to take a quick moment to just discuss the difference between those two. So funds are the financial unit of the budget. There's the general fund, the water fund. The next slide, I actually have the breakdown of the different funds. Departments are more the functional units of government that, that we talk about, you know, police and fire and public works. And these are, again, more of the operating areas of the local government of the city of Evanston that you're used to interacting with. And these things lay across each other, right? So we have, funds are again, sort of how things get broken up financially, they're based on the requirements of different operating areas, different kinds of funding sources coming into the city, et cetera, whereas departments are more the functional units. This chart here shows our budget broken down by major fund types. So first off, the city's 2021 budget is $296 million approximately. The city's budget tends to sit around $300,000, goes up and down a little bit each year, often depending on large capital projects. Of this amount, more than a third of it, 39%, is our general fund. Our general fund is our general operating fund. It includes police, fire, public works, parks and recreation. It includes most of the city's services that you're most familiar with interacting with, as well as all the administrative functions of the city are included there as well. The other large chunk for our budget, I will, I will point out is that 25% in orange, those are our enterprise funds. Those enterprise funds are our water fund, our sewer fund, solid waste and parking funds. And these areas of our operations are all supported by user fees. So anything you pay for those different services is going directly to support that service. So that's why they're called an enterprise fund and they're sort of separated out. And then you can see that there are a few other categories of funds included in the budget, debt service, our Evanston Public Library funds, capital funds for capital projects, and then special revenue funds. These are, these are funds like the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan funds, that maybe have a specified purpose, that have a dedicated funding source in need that needs to be in a separate fund. This next chart shows the departments that are in our general fund. So again, this is about a third of our overall city budget, but it tends to be the portion we talk about the most. Of our general fund, which is about $111,000 in 2021, the police department takes up about a third of that, fire department about another quarter. So public safety is a large portion of that fund. And then you can see the other departments sort of distributed throughout the rest of, the rest of the funding there. Just a quick note that health and human
Kate, I think you're cutting out there.
Hi, can you hear me again?
Yep.
All right. Sorry about that. So again, this, this graph shows the, the departments in our general fund, just a quick sense of, of where the money is laying out as part of our general fund for 2021. This is a quick overview of our general fund revenue sources. So our revenue is funded, our general fund is funded primarily through a variety of different taxes. So this includes property taxes, which make up about a quarter of our revenue, sales and income taxes, about another quarter. Other local taxes are all the sort of home rule taxes you pay. That includes your real tax that you pay every year to the city. It includes real estate transfer taxes, all things like that. Permit signs and fees are, are user, both user fees that you pay, like for the city's parks and recreation programs, as well as building permits, parking fines, things like that. So what this really shows is that our revenue in the general fund comes from quite a variety of sources, many of them dependent on economic activity. And it's not solely funded sort of through the property tax. This chart shows that when you pay a dollar of property tax in Evanston, it gets split between all the different taxing entities and bodies in Evanston. So to better understand that, the city gets 17% of the property tax that's paid in the city of Evanston. The library gets another 3%, so between the library and the city, we're at about 20%. And then the school districts and the, and the county receive the rest. So when you pay a property tax bill in Evanston, that's not all going directly to the city, that's getting split out between these different entities. And then finally, just to, to touch on the impacts that COVID-19 had on the city's budget, we did see a very significant revenue loss in our budget. Due to COVID-19, the primary losses, as, as Mayor Biss stated, were in sales tax and many of these other taxes really connected with economic activity in our downtown, in our central business districts. Some of our revenues actually came in over budget. So this was a bit of a surprise, but a use tax comes from online orders that come from out of state that of course went up in the pandemic, building permits went up as folks wanted to do projects on their home during this, this time. And then we also implemented a number of expense savings. So there were staff layoffs for frillow days, renegotiation of many of our service contracts with vendors that, that brought us to where we, we landed in 2020, which was not with a $10 million deficit. It was, it was fortunately much, much better than that. But we do, you know, still look at that revenue loss and see that things could have been a lot better had we, you know, had we been able to receive that revenue last year. So that is some of what we look at when we look at this ARPA money too. And that wraps up my portion. Kelly, do you want to take over on discussing sort of the next stage of the town hall here?
Sure, yes. We're going to be going into breakout rooms around 10 to 12 people. Her breakout room with a facilitator who has so graciously agreed to help moderate discussion. We have some thought provoking questions that we'd like you to consider. This will be an opportunity for everybody to be heard in their breakout rooms. And then everyone will report back by group and we'll have the opportunity to share what came out of the discussion from each breakout room. We're going to take an actual 30 minute break so that we have, well, we won't be break, we'll be breaking the staff, but you won't be breaking in your breakout rooms, you're all going to be busy discussing. So if you just want to give us a moment, Director Stowe is going to put everybody into the breakout rooms and facilitators will lead discussion for next steps. And we'll see you back in the general group in about 30 minutes.
If the number at the bottom of my screen is accurate, almost everybody has migrated back from the breakout rooms, which strikes me as both a miracle and a testament to Luke's remarkable growth. So thank you, Luke, and thanks to everyone. I know that in our breakout room, we had a really, really interesting discussion. I mean, I shouldn't say we, I almost entirely succeeded to keep my mute button on and, and listen. So let's say they had a great discussion. I'm looking forward to hearing back from folks. Now, everyone was in a numbered breakout room. I'm not sure how much folks noticed, so I'm going to see if we can call on people numerically and if that doesn't resonate with folks, then we'll find a different path forward. But is the, does the person who took notes and intended to report out from breakout room one, do you, do you know who you are and so are you here and ready to, to report back?
Key would be Matt Easterday.
Oh.
Yes. Hello, I'm Matt. Our breakout room was Rose, Margaret, Yenna, and Linda was a facilitator and Jan from EPL was also there helping out. So for question one, the big priorities were public health and economic impact, also childcare, workforce training. These were things that everyone thought were important but kind of fall to the wayside because we usually focus on infrastructure. And pipe in if I, if I miss anything or misrepresent. Question two, the, was the city, how would we like to be engaged? There was a feeling that more people should have a seat at the table. There was a feeling that by the time things get to council, it's too late to say anything because it's already been decided in committee. One idea was to reinvigorate block clubs, some way to break down the words in the smaller groups. And then there's also an equity issue about reaching out and making sure that all people's voices are heard. Also, there was a desire to provide more broadband, that might be a way to involve more people, but funding is a problem and also might not be the best way to reach seniors. That was about as far as we got. We did all the other questions in about five minutes. There was a, a big desire to make sure that the eighth and fifth ward are going to benefit from the funding in term, and also places, other aspect, other places where, that were particularly impacted like COVID, by COVID, both the fifth and eighth ward, but also downtown and commercial areas and essential workers. We'd like to invest in those areas and also consider daycare and affordable housing. So that was about it. Did I miss anything, group one? No? Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you so much, Matt. That's a great report. Just, I, of course, completely neglected to say that we've budgeted, you know, solid five minutes for every group. So you, you came in under budget, which is, you know, as a guy who used to be professor and then became a politician, I've never done that when it comes to, to time allotted, but you're, you're a miracle worker. So, so, but you know, going forward, folks can take, take five minutes if they want to share and, and you know, and I'm, I'm happy to, and the other staff on the, who are in the, in the Zoom are happy to respond if there's specific questions, but also, you know, that was an instance where you guys really had kind of specific, specific comments. And if you were not seeing in the chat, Rebecca Kapaydan has said if you could just copy and paste your notes into the Google form, so we have all of them in one place, that would be super helpful. Thank you very much, Matt. And so with that, is the person reporting out from breakout room two in the, in the Zoom and ready to report out?
Sure, I think that's me. I couldn't convince my team members to take notes, so I gave them a pass. They're going to owe me, you all owe me big time. So I had Toby, Angela, Matt, Jim and Val as part of my breakout team. And so for the first question, we, we quest, we actually led through inquiry, right? Which is a great way to do this work. And we asked ourselves, who's been hurt the most? And we wondered, you know, who has, who has hurt the most? Who has, where has the most negative impact fallen? And if we have data as a city to be able to assess the what and the how has been hurt the most? And we also, through other questions, wondered, you know, maybe there may be some data that the city itself doesn't have that maybe fellow partners like the Chamber of Commerce and others may have. But really, we answered it with the question about who's been hurt the most and making sure that we're responding in an equitable way. What else? For the second question, folks liked this layout. We were commenting on how COVID has provided new opportunities for engagement and folks talked about how being able to have a public forum to be engaged. And we also talked about lifting up boards and commissions that are also in existence because they could be great conduits to the sectors of the community that we want to make sure that we are engaging. We talked about creating surveys, but for us to be creative in figuring out how we can communicate with hard to reach communities. So that came up. On the third question, mental health, mental health, mental health. I think it was multiple folks on the team who talked about this is where our investments need to go. In regards to the fourth question, folks talked about what we can do to reinvigorate our, our local economy, our downtown. And then we talked about what's missing, who's missing? Again, great questions that kept on coming up about how are we engaging those who are not typically engaged or who didn't join us today? As it relates to the fifth question, folks talked about ensuring that we're supporting communities of color, local businesses who have left and not returned, and the, the, our loss of our movie theater was raised because we know that other local businesses around the theater also relied on them. And so concerns about the loss of our theater. As it, as regard, in regards to question six, we talked about traditional infrastructure, our lead water pipes, this has been an issue in the past. I believe this is an issue that was also raised in our schools. This is a one-time phenomenal opportunity to upgrade our lead water pipes. We also wondered about our train platforms and viaducts and road maintenance, again, traditional infrastructure. There was also a comment about the kinds of investments that we should make in parks and fields, particularly in underserved communities, because we really want to encourage healthy living, healthy engagements. Last question, we talked about again, how can we encourage merchants to come back? Can we provide some sort of financial or different types of enticements to have local businesses come back? And we also talked about continuing to engage the community in ways that are both on the front end with ideas, but also in the middle in decision-making and implementation. And a question was asked, before I forget, about who's going to make the final decision and what role does the community get to play? Okay, that is the rundown of group two. Thank you.
Alhamdulillah, thank you. That's awesome. And, you know, I always find it really interesting, you have different groups and their, their answers are different and overlapping in really important ways. So I'm really glad we structured this in this way. To your last question, just the, the sort of blunt answer is it's the city's money and the city will decide. So ultimately that means the city council will decide. And I have to say, the good news is I have had just absolute unanimity in my conversations with folks on city council about their, what I believe to be a really genuine commitment to public input. I think, I think honestly, people kind of feel like, phew, this is a big responsibility. And we, we, we know that, that there's a lot riding on getting this right. And I think people genuinely feel like that requires the public to have a voice. But there's not sort of like a formal written in stone or law role that the public plays, it's simply the, the choice that I'm really glad to say the council wants to make. And we might want to think, either for this process or going forward, about ways to kind of formalize tools for, for public input so that, so that people really know, right? Right? One of the things I think about all the time is if you want people to give input, people's time is valuable and they won't give input unless they believe it actually matters. And so making sure that it's crystal clear in advance that the input will be taken seriously is an important tool to ensure that we'll actually get people to give their time required to share their thoughts. So next is the group that I was lucky enough to be in, working group three.
Hi, everyone. I will try to report on behalf of group three, which like Mayor Biss said, included Mayor Biss. And we were in an unusual group because we had several city staff employees as well as people who were generally just really interested in community engagement. So we did a lot more listening and thinking about how we can do the engagement more and better than maybe we did, we spent on like the first question about the particular things we want to invest in. But when it does come to the first question, a few, a couple things came up as being really important. So we talked a lot about housing and several specific areas within that included fixed site acquisition and rehab, tenant-based rental assistance, case management and rental subsidies and development of permanent housing for people who need special assistance. And we also talked about climate change and climate justice issues and how do we kind of use some of this funding to support CARP implementation, particularly as it relates to helping staff the sustainability office in Evanston and helping with some of the CARP implementation issues. And we also talked about frontline workers, grocery stores, doc, grocery store workers, doctors, nurses, thinking about what are some of the ways we can better support those folks as well. And then we spent a lot of time, as I said before, talking about the second question, or I guess the third question, about how do we think Evanston community members could be or I guess the third question, about how do we think Evanston community members could be more engaged in the process? So one thing we, our whole group was in agreement with was that we, like, as wonderful as this for forum is, this doesn't necessarily reach a lot of the people who are most, you know, suffering under the need of of some of the things that we wanted to spend the money on. So like, not everybody is going to be able to join a Zoom call at 4:00 P. M. and and have these discussions. So we we spent a lot of time thinking about what are ways we could reach some of these people who are were not able to participate in the current existing ways we are doing community engagement. So one of the things we were talking a lot about was canvassing. And is there a way we can use canvassing to reach those people as well as just, you know, go to where they are at? So, you know, show up more like Matt said, like on the blocks of of people who live in Evanston, in libraries, grocery stores, what have you. And and similarly to what Mayor Biss was saying before, really not just use, not just asking them for public input, but really being like thinking about how we can meaningfully engage people in the process. We talked about what that would look like in terms of, you know, co-designing policies, really getting them involved in the design of policies, not just giving input and opinions about policies. We talked about, we talked about how, how to, yeah, like also hold holds the city accountable and 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 really not just say like, we're just gonna, we're just gonna give our time. But how do we like, I guess, give give people something back for that time? And and that's something that we want to, we want to think more about going forward. So, yeah, I think that is, that's probably a good summary. Please, Mayor Biss, you were part of my group, so let me know if I missed anything.
No, that was astonishing, actually. I don't know how you managed to speak and take notes at the same time, but it was, it was witchcraft. It was very effective. And I don't think you left anything out, certainly that I that I, that comes to my mind. So thank you very much, Christine. Is the person ready to report out from Working Group Four?
So that must be me. I I didn't pay attention to my number. I was just waiting for silence when the number was mentioned.
We got it.
And I too, as a facilitator, and volunteered since we didn't want to waste time talking about who was going to do it. So we had Joan, Linda, and Nancy in our group as residents, and then we had a few guest listeners as well. On the first question, the very first thing that that came up, that has already come up on this Zoom is the lead pipes in Evanston. And seeing that, seeing this as a golden opportunity to address that, not only would it be enhancing the safety of our families, but it also could provide a lot of employment opportunities for our residents. So that was a prominent thought in question number one. We also talked about the idea of reframing the Police and Fire Department under under public safety, wanting to go to them and ask them what it is they need in order to do their work effectively and fairly. That was talked about a little bit and and then being responsive to those requests with this funding. And affordable housing was mentioned throughout our our time together. We talked about downtown Evanston and needing, with all of the businesses that have left, we wondered what would be replaced there and wanting it to be, we called it an anchor for the community, where whatever goes into those spaces would be something that is pertinent to all residents, not not just trendy shops, but pertinent to all residents such as health providers, things that everybody needs in order to make our downtown important and relevant to everybody. And then moving on to question two. Again, affordable housing came up and we had an expert on the call who taught us a little bit about when the government invests in affordable housing, sometimes those projects are only sustained over 15 years. And so community land trusts were were raised as an option that might be a better choice because children can inherit those homes over time. And just the idea of increasing affordable housing. So expert Linda on the phone, did I carry that? Did I capture that right?
Yes, I think the main thing to point out is that when affordable housing is put into a community land trust, it is a resource available to the community in perpetuity. That's the key thing. So that government funds would go into creating affordable housing under any format. But under the existing format with the the tax credits being structured the way they are, it's it's lost. So it's it's like you're constantly creating and losing and creating and losing. And that when you have a community land trust, you create and you retain it forever. So I think it's important to create that and use it for Evanston to have a perpetual source of affordable housing. Thanks.
Thanks, Linda. And then in addition to that, we just talked about something kind of special that happened to us last year in terms of learning more about our community during the pandemic, learning more about local businesses, locally owned businesses, businesses that had been, have been in families for generations, black-owned businesses, homegrown businesses is, it was sort of the theme of that part of the conversation. And wanting to see a lot of that come back and how can we support them, possibly through small grants, but but prioritizing that. And then lastly, around how to be a part of the process, we thought that this is a great way to do it, but it would be also helpful if possibly a survey would go out with different categories, such as today, that gives people an opportunity to think about it a little bit and then come to a forum like this as well, so that there's just a chance to really formulate your thoughts in order to share. That's it.
Thank you so much, Carol. That's great. We appreciate it. We're off to Group Five. Someone available to report out from Working Group Five?
Okay. Oh, I think I think that's me. Is that right?
That's you, Suzanne. Yeah.
Okay, good. So we kind of rambled around a lot, but in terms of the first question, there was concern about the use of our first responders. And they are really trained as policemen, but there's many smaller things that could be done, like a stolen bike or that's just an instance. Many, many calls to nine one one are really not, could be handled by someone with less skills than our current first responders. And the example given was people that do the parking meters. So it that would help us financially and keep our first responders doing what they're best at doing. There was a request in terms of infrastructure. There's a not-for-profit that is trying to build a new school building in the Fifth or or Second Ward. And because all the kids that live in those wards are bused to other schools and if they could have a K through eight local school, it would be a lot easier for them. And they'd also have the opportunity to stay after school, play on the playground, get to know their kid, other kids better. And it's a long-term investment, as is any investment in schools, is you don't see the response of that until they're adults, how how impactful that was in their lives. The building itself would be, sixty-five would lease it and the library would be another VC. And they could function outside of the school, within and and after school hours. So it would be better, a better used building. There was concern that COVID impacted disproportionately low income and people of color. Interest in housing affordability, it's difficult to stay in Evanston. And there's a significant displacement of people of color. Request for jobs training funding and a higher minimum wage in the city. And but increasing our support for public health, which goes to a lot of different things, housing, health, mental health. There's so much more to public health than just providing shots and and those kinds of issues. And then we talked about this kind of meeting versus an in-person meeting. And some people pervert, prefer to Zoom meeting. Some of us were there because we couldn't come on Saturday. And we were particularly pleased that the city is reaching out to and this Spanish Hispanic population with a Spanish-speaking meeting. And we'd like to see that continue to reach out to all parts of the community. Finally, in dividing the forty-three million, was suggested better use of city finances and infrastructure. Public health is, again, is, would like more money so they could have a broader impact on housing, race racism, how people thrive in general. And I think that pretty much sums it up. Kelly, do you have anything else to add?
I think you did a great job, Suzanne. Thank you. Suzanne, thank you.
Thank you so much, Sue. That's that's great. And and just the, in response to the question that you asked near the top of your report, my read of the federal law is that the infrastructure funding, in fact, could not be used to build a school building. That it really is specifically for those topics that are delineated, which is to say water, sewer, and broadband. Now, an optimist might say that, and hey, even I would say, would that the the federal government is in the throes of a lot of negotiation around further infrastructure legislation. In fact, my guess is that the reason that the infrastructure options for the current funding are so limited is specifically because Congress envisioned passing infrastructure legislation later on in the year. And so if that occurs, it surely would be eligible to support construction of school buildings. Whether that would be sent through the city or the school district or administered directly by the state or federal government, of course, is all, you know, unpredictable at this time. But there may be an opportunity later on in the year, depending on how those negotiations proceed in Washington. Thank you again. That was super thorough. So the next group is Group Six. Someone available to report out from Group Six?
Six led by Rebecca Permet.
I'm sorry, that's David. Go ahead.
Okay. This group, if I missed someone, I apologize. Jenny Karlovitz, Loretta, S. B. Mary Collins, Anne Levy Brown, Carly Butler, myself, and Rebecca Permet. Comments were definitely infrastructure, roads, bridges, sewer, public health, public health, social service agencies, not-for-profits, crime avoidance, social services to deter violence in the city, trauma-informed care and solutions, resident and nonprofit support, not only for the frontline not-for-profits, but also agencies that augment and enrich community sustainability, affordable housing for lower class, and even help for the middle class because the cost of living in Evanston is increasing, economic development for small businesses, and sustaining not-for-profits. Helping not-for-profits because they can accomplish more through volunteers. They're accustomed to operating on a on a strapped budget. A study worked to spend the funds to ensure that they are spent on areas that will turn these dollars over most exponentially within the city. Forty-three million dollars may sound like a lot of money to you and me, but it's really only about the third of the cost of a state-of-the-art new high school. With all of the competing interests, forty-three million dollars can disappear really quickly. So we encourage the city to require bidding contractors to be licensed within the city of Evanston and even housed within the city. Do everything that we can to ensure that these dollars multiply and have that multiplication factor. Provide qualifications of not allowing the funds to be spent towards study groups and outside consultants on how to spend the funds for any specific organization. And also, we today, we do not know and understand fully the impact upon mental health for the youth, school-aged children. Set aside some in reserve to address these issues as they develop. Public health, mental health, mental health, mental health was continually mentioned as something that's a real priority. And then with infrastructure, what needs to be addressed that cities traditionally kick that can down the road, but with this funding could be done now? I I understand the optimism and hopefully that will occur with additional infrastructure. However, two to three years from now, if we're having problems with hidden underground piping, whether it's fresh water or wastewater, it's going to continue to be more expensive and people may say, why didn't we do this when we had those funds? Then to the other questions of how to do this, engage the citizens, even though citizens not old enough to vote, engage all parts of the community and provide additional steps for feedback. Connection and resilience, engagement and facilitation. How can these dollars bring the city together more? And thank you for this opportunity. And I apologize if I missed anything or left anything out.
Thank you so much. That was wonderfully, wonderfully. Well, I wasn't in the room, so I can't say it covered everything, but it sure has covered a lot. So thank you for the detailed report out. Yeah, I just want to echo something you said, you know, forty-three million dollars is the smallest huge number you'll ever find. It's just an absolutely enormous amount of money, which we could spend ten times over easily if we if we weren't restricted. And so understanding its magnitude and also being appropriately cautious, given the limitations, I think is a really important admonition. So thank you for that. Now we come to Group Seven. Someone available to report out from Group Seven?
I think that was Group Seven. I believe we're on Group Eight now.
Oh, did we do Group, did we skip Group Six or did we do Group Six and I just forgot how numbers work?
I think we missed Group Six, but we can, we can go back to them at the end.
Okay, well, let's go to Group Eight now.
All right, I think I'm Group Eight, unless somebody else could claim it before I start. All right, great. We thought the highest priority, and there's lots of priorities, but the highest priority that we thought of was wireless broadband citywide. During COVID, the digital divide really showed here in Evanston as well as nationwide. And we think this would have a huge impact on students, older adults, people experiencing homelessness, and people who can't afford home access to internet. Second, increased availability of childcare and preschool. Some type of way to get this started would be great. I know it probably couldn't be sustained through this, but perhaps, and I think Mayor Biss talked about this earlier, perhaps a focus on helping people who are in need of job training and assistance returning to work, part of that could be COVID-related. The next one I brought up, and primarily because I work at the Music Institute of Chicago, and we weren't hugely negatively impacted during COVID because we did lessons which could have, which continued online. But we have heard from lots of our friends, artists, and as well as arts organizations that they were very negatively impacted during COVID. So many went from a full schedule of gigs, performances, shows, and so on, to absolutely nothing for most of the last year. And many are still having a very hard time reconnecting with their arts backgrounds. A collaboration with Oakton to host job training at a location in Evanston would be great. I mean, Oakton has lots of resources, but it's difficult, even if it's just in Skokie to get to. So that could be for youth, people recently released from prison, people experiencing homelessness, people directly impacted by COVID. Um and as I mentioned before, we could have childcare. It could be at a school, after hours or community center. So basically dislocate. Of education and some social services at a location in the community. Um we rarely thought that the mental health of people. In Evanston, youth in particular, but pretty much everybody has been exacerbated by COVID. Um the police could definitely benefit, we thought, from having a mental health professional or professionals with them. Um as well as increase the number of public healthcare workers. So there wouldn't, you know, God forbid, any pandemic ever happens again in our lifetimes or ever. But we could be better prepared by having a more robust public healthcare sector. Um I think one of our, I know it was showed in the the charts about spending on public health. And I didn't take note of it, but one of our uh group members said that it was about. Percent compared to lots of other things or significantly greater. Our list continues because we had lots of great ideas. Housing for homeless, people experiencing homeless would be great, in particular women and children. We seem to remember that there was an effort right before COVID and we didn't know exactly what happened afterwards or during COVID. But definitely a focus on people. Parents homeless uh who are experiencing homelessness, who definitely were impacted during the pandemic. We did bring up the idea of a fifth word uh school. Mirabiz just mentioned isn't part of the possibilities for this. But in terms of increased economic, educational, recreational and other opportunities and under-resourced communities and. Specifically the fifth wards. And then a fund for essential workers is very important, though we thought it should be broader than. Governments, how about grocery store workers, nursing home staff, childcare workers? And basically how to better support them in the work that they continue to do. Um I don't know if it was part of the second question, but something that did come up. That a couple of our members felt wouldn't be an adequate use for this, so. Will that others make the decision about it, but we felt. While Northlight Theater would be a great asset for the city of Evanston. Uh we didn't feel that the funding for it met the guidelines for ARPA. Um so the building using it for capital construction wouldn't be appropriate. I mean, that's sort of infrastructure. And this isn't in the level of infrastructure that is considered right. Um and then I also, I wondered, and someone maybe could answer this from the Budget Office. Those are truly an economic impact. I know having to to the city of Evanston, I know moving, having to. Go through revenue loss, but then when I added up. Real quickly, the revenue lost, it seemed to equal new revenue plus reduced expenses. So I. So look at the economic impact to the city, but it seemed like it was a net zero there. And with regard to the process, just we'd like it to be more transparent, and I think it's moving in that direction right now. Um I guess as a compliment to the mayor and the New City Council, we felt that there's hope with a new mayor and new city council. Some of the folks who have been involved for years said they didn't feel that there was as much community impact, so we're hopeful that the process will. Continue to be different. Um we thought that if the Alders had community meetings, that would be great. Maybe that's already in their plans and. Already reaching out to constituents. And then. Seconding or thirding the thoughts of a lot of people, just finding out ways to engage all Evanstonians, not just the folks who are able to come to meetings. So that's my thoughts or our thoughts.
Great. Uh thank you so much. Um. One thing to to respond to is regarding the uh the revenue loss. Yeah, I mean, so like we're a. You know, we're we're a we're a humble little city, so we we can't. We can't just sort of run a giant deficit, you know, we 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 do issue bonds, but but you know. Typically, we kind of have to balance the budget, otherwise we run out of money to to make payroll. And so we lost significant amounts of revenue and for the most part made significant cuts. So that at the end of the day, it was in fact a wash. Uh the question is whether it's important to restore those cuts or not. Um and you know, obviously, I've not been mayor. During the course of the time those cuts were made, but the indications I've gotten from those who watched the impact on service delivery was that it was pretty significant. Um so obviously, it's a one of many priorities to balance against others, but um but the the point is not that we sort of have a big deficit hole to fill. The point is that we fix the deficit hole by. Pairing back our capacity to provide services and then might want to consider rebuilding to where we were before the pandemic.
Okay, great, thanks. Real quickly, um with regard to Northlight Theater. Um we were actually a little fearful that. I mean, Northlight really got out in front of this process. They're a large organization. Might be with some lobbyists or this and that. And I know they've received significant funding already from the state and perhaps other government sources. So we were just concerned that they might have a disproportionate ability to influence the process.
Yeah, I mean, maybe I'm a little jaded from my my previous life, you know, where I in Springfield, where I saw powerful lobbies really at work. Um I kind of haven't seen that in Evanston. I mean, certainly, the Northlight. People have my phone number and I love the idea of the Northlight and it's fun to meet with them, but. Everybody else has my phone number too, and I love all of them and it's fun to meet with them too. I I was not there, but I understand that Northlight presented to the to the Economic Development Committee with a a very ambitious request and. I think basically everybody agrees that having Northlight in downtown Evanston would be great. And. Also, I think the committee wanted to figure out, you know, is. Is this request? What ought to be at the top of our priority list, given the other needs and and other abilities that Northlight might have to raise funds? So I I don't. I have not had the experience so far that there's, you know, the fixes in or whatever. Um I think there are people who would love to see Northlight funded. Um I personally would love to see Northlight in downtown Evanston. Uh and the question that I asked the Northlight people when they spoke to me in private is a question I'm happy to share publicly, which is. Uh the city's value proposition isn't, do we love the idea of Northlight? It's would the funding we give you? Be the difference between Northlight coming and not coming? Or would it be the difference between Northlight coming sooner versus coming later? And if you can paint that picture for us that there's a real value proposition for the city, I'm really interested. Um but that's the that's the hurdle that that I would argue needs to be cleared. The one thing I will say, though, is um. I think the Northlight advocates argue very credibly that. Um it's not a generic capital expense, it's specifically an economic recovery. Expenditure, that it is clearly in the interest of the businesses that have been struggling in downtown Evanston to have. A lot more people downtown to go to plays before which they might go for dinner after them, it might go for a drink. And so I I think that that request. Really must be evaluated against other economic recovery priorities. Uh and I'm sure there'll be serious consideration for it, but I don't I don't I wouldn't worry that that there's some sort of behind the scenes deal that's been cut. If there is, it's way above my pay grade, that's. And um and I I appreciate the blunt question and, you know, what you can always count on for me as a blunt answer to to blunt questions. And I I think that that kind of dialogue is important for our community. So now we're up to group nine. Uh is there someone available to report out uh from group nine? Um Emma, you jumped in. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't know what number I am, but since someone else is responding, I'll um speak for group nine. Um I was the facilitator. And Jody, who had to leave before our large group um session. Was the note taker, Jody from the white. We had Karen from the library on the line and Matt from Canal Shores. So um full transparency, when I posed the first question, I put the word vulnerable in for residents. And then I saw that that word wasn't there. So maybe it was my own um divine intervention. That I included that, but um we talked about who is vulnerable. Um we talked about affordable housing. What is really affordable, essential workers and childcare, food insecurity is a question. Job security, also health needs, um mental health needs, access and eligibility. For healthcare, mental health care. Um overall capacity building. Seniors and families that are. Living paycheck to paycheck. Economic planning for sustainable um broadband to make it a public utility. Um ensuring that we're closing the digital divide. With additional access to broadband across the city. Um an assessment of the areas. Of the city that are unreliable with broadband. An opportunity to reach youth in and seniors. And make sure that they have the internet access. We know that last year um that was something that we that came up that. Many of our youth do not have access to be able to do remote learning, that our seniors were isolated because they didn't have access. Or the education to um use technology in the ways that could keep them connected. Then for the second question, similar to most um. What everyone else was saying. That um investment in. The project that brings sustaining growth, um such as TIF. Job training and development, skills building. Tracking individuals' progression through services. And then how would the city capture the results of investment? That builds individuals, individual capacity and community capacity and revenue. Uh tracking the return on investment and return on investment. And is this tried and true programs or something that's just um. Brand new and we're experimenting. Um investment in business sustainability. We touch about how some of our. Programs like our businesses had to close and suffered um some losses and how to help build. Come back and be sustainable, but also, for example, Canal Shores, who was open to. The community throughout the whole time and. The as a result, suffered some damage. Atypical to what they would have and before COVID. And how can we support them in rebuilding and and maintaining what their losses were? And how essential they were for mental health of individuals in the community. More access online, um in person opportunities for use. Community town halls for um the information. And resources for the Evanston Care Networks. We have a system set up already, but could we um build that to be more. Sustainable and more accessible to our residents. And then how we like to be involved. If we're not engaged in the communities we're passionate about. Then we may not be represented. So for example, if we're not at having a seat at the table. We may be left out. So seniors need to be represented, youth, um our essential workers. Business owners, we all need to have a seat at the table so that our voices can be heard and that we can better inform the city of what needs are for our own. Resources. I we also need to consider the complete impacts of COVID. Places that were not used, places that were overused and need more capital for infrastructure. Um reflecting back on the input that was shared. Understand the criteria that was used in the decision making. So when the decision making happens. What, how? Can we be informed of the process? What criteria do you base the decision on? Uh what measures are going to be taken to understand if the outcomes were successful? Was the funding going to be um. Al- allocated? The funding for both years are going to be allocated during this first year, or will the second year be used? To hold back and inform. Well, maybe this didn't work so well. Maybe we shouldn't continue with this. Maybe we should invest money towards something else. Let me see if there was anything else. That was it.
Great, thank you so much. And you know what? Your last question really illustrated that I kind of messed something up. I I I mentioned in the beginning that we already have half the money in the bank today and the other half is arriving next year. Any normal person would interpret that as meaning that it's to be spent this year and next year, but that's actually not true. We've got a four year period of time during which to spend it. Uh and I think your point is extremely well taken. We ought to use that time to roll things out gradually, evaluate them. And be prepared to adjust our plans based upon what we learn. Uh so thank you. Thank you very much for flagging that. And I apologize, I should have explained that uh on the front end of the program. I if I'm counting right, we've we're we've heard from all but one of the groups. So is is there one? I'm I'm not going to guess the numbers anymore because clearly um there's some. Some confusion about that, but is there is there one more person prepared to report out from a group from which we have not yet heard?
Yes, hi. Um can you hear me?
You bet.
Okay, great. Yeah, hi. Um so. Uh good afternoon or evening, everyone. Uh my group um was um Colette, Dolores, Martha. Uh Joel and Dory. And uh Rebecca was our uh facilitator moderator. Um so for the 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 sort of main question prioritization, what what uh what to uh where what should we emphasize? Uh for this money, a couple of things came out of this. Um so the first thing is uh sort of uh family focus and and the building that serves is is. Uh for family focus and and the point was made that it's not only, it's a hub, it's a hub in the fifth ward, it's an important um structure. And that there are several nonprofits and organizations that um operate out of that building, they're doing their best and but it needs some serious repairs. And so. Um that was the first thing that was highlighted was what can we do um from from that perspective as a as a community center, if you will, a place for uh for folks. The other thing that really came out, uh next thing was um housing, as as has been mentioned by a lot of folks and and certainly. Um was no different in our breakout session. Um housing was a huge need, um affordable housing. And really trying to um make it sustainable, I think, is another point that another group was made had made, and that was something that came up in our conversations about. You know, what can we do um such as purchasing properties or 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 what can we do to make sure that? Um you know, that. The land and the buildings can remain affordable for a very long time, if not in perpetuity. So. Um that was a really big thing that really came out of it to to make a commitment to, you know, low to moderate income families in the in the community to support affordable housing. Um workforce development, that was another big thing that came out. Um what can we do to train folks, particularly young people? Um for things that need to be uh that need to happen in our city. There are, you know, the upgrades and repairs. Uh roads, power lines, sewers, what have you. What can we do? Um also adding in, you know, a training component for, you know, the trades, you know, or for plumbing or what have you. So that was something that. And really kind of delved into um another point that was made in terms of youth outreach. There's an opportunity in terms of the workforce development to really reach out particularly to uh younger populations and. Um and get them trained in uh in performing tasks and items and and serious work that the city needs. And then along with those lines, there was an idea of um what can we do to actually not only target the youth, but reach out to them? And get their input and understand what they want and understand what they need, um and then create programs and create opportunities that are designed uh for them and by them. That's the point that was made. Beyond that, there's a public health element to all of this, which was certainly um also highlighted. One point that was made, and again, I think um some, you know, there's a lot of uh carryover here, um a lot of great ideas and. But one of them um in our group for sure was um childcare. And with a particular emphasis on on childcare and child healthcare as well. Given uh the trauma that a lot of folks have experienced, particularly coming out of the pandemic. Um if, you know, parents are experiencing things, then kids are going to experience that too. And a point was made about um, you know, the fact that our our early childhood education providers are um underpaid. Um and we know, and it's kind of a inverse. Circumstance where we know that from, you know, zero to five is is just about the most impactful period of time. In a young person's life and it really has very determinative for their outcomes. But we're we're not as focused as we should be on that part of uh of of our kids. And so that was a big, big part of it. Um there was a point made about a and and I think I tried my best to capture which plan it was, because I think there have been some neighborhood plans over the years. Um that were mentioned, but I so the the term I picked up was west, was west Evanston, or if I got that wrong, someone in my group, please let me know. Uh but basically that there was a neighborhood plan that years ago incorporated workforce training. Um and in fact, it was um it had some some recognition beyond, West Side Plan, thank you. Um that that had some recognition beyond um the uh, you know, even just the borders of our town. And there was some thought that we. And there was some thought that we should go back to that or we should, we should reexamine that, um, and identify, uh, the best places that we can, um, to try to, you know, reemphasize implementation of, of the things that were in that plan. Um, sustainability came up. What can we do to promote sustainability? And also sustainability in terms of, um, its impact in a lot of ways, and one of them being on housing again, and also for seniors. And what can we do, um, to help seniors age in place, um, and some other things that they try to, um, to help our senior population? Um, and then lastly, really, you know, again, you know, just what can we do to, uh, promote not only affordable housing, but broadly speaking, economic development? Um, so, you know, the, the thought is that, um, with all of these things is, and as I think as you pointed out, Mirabes, that at the beginning, these are the things that we can do to invest so that we don't have to continue to try to find money for them years down the road or the things that really should, uh, we should be focusing on. And so, uh, how can we develop affordable housing in a way that is going to be sustainable? How can we, um, promote and attract, um, capital and, and more businesses opening up? And also supporting entrepreneurship, um, for, for residents who would like to start a small business? And what can we do, um, for any, you know, startup capital funds or anything like that? And the idea behind that is that if we're able to, of course, generate more economic revenue, economic activity, we're going to be able to generate more, more revenue, um, for the city. So that should help, um, at least in the medium to long term, um, with some of our budgetary concerns as well as, you know, ensuring we have the most, you know, vibrant, stable community that we can. So, um, and then last thing as far as the, um, how we would like to be engaged. The conversation was so, you know, robust, um, for the first question, we, we kind of didn't really fully get to, to that second one. But the one comment that, that we were able to get or that was, that came up prior to the breakout room ending was, um, you know, we got a lot of committees, we've got a lot of boards, we've got a lot of groups and organizations, um, in the city. And so, uh, what could we do to, the idea was, you know, what could we do to leverage them and ask them to, um, basically come up with their own list of priorities and submit them in some sort of more formalized way? Um, top list of, you know, a couple, three, three priority items and then have city staff, um, you know, basically, you know, make a, make a decision or, or evaluate. Um, you know, the various proposals and the various top priorities that were presented by the various groups. So, um, that was, uh, that was what we got to on that. So, um, I hope I represented the group well in terms of what was, uh, discussed and, uh, that's, that's, that's what we cover.
Beautiful. Thank you so much for the, um, great, great summary. So thanks, thanks to everyone, um, who was willing to report out. Uh, those were really robust and thorough. Um, definitely looking forward to reading over the notes. And again, for those of you, um, who haven't yet, uh, if the note taker could click on the link and, uh, upload, uh, the, the notes that we have in your own words, um, as much of a record as possible. Listen, you know, I found this incredibly encouraging and inspiring. I thought there's a ton of really good ideas, a lot of really, um, useful ways of thinking about things that I had not, uh, thought of already. I also think it's pretty obvious we're not done yet, right? This, this, this is the output of, of this afternoon's conversation is going to be incredibly useful as one of many steps in the, uh, to get from here into actually getting the dollars out the door to the right places in a way that's consistent with the community's values. It's going to require a lot more work and I would just say, uh, I'm committed to making sure that the community is at that table, uh, at a variety of points along the way. And I would simply say thank you to everyone who gave your time today and ask you to continue to be involved in that effort, uh, going forward. Cause we're going to want to come back to you and say, okay, we've heard the following co- collection of wonderful ideas, please help us prioritize, please help us refine, please help us figure out how to sequence things. Uh, and, and based upon the quality of this afternoon's discussion, I think it's really obvious that you're going to have a lot to say about those questions as well. Um, today wouldn't have happened if not for our, uh, the C P partners in the nonprofit sector, uh, the Evanston Community Foundation, Evanston Latinos, Evanston Early Childhood, Evanston Creative Career and Northwestern. They came to us and they said, listen, we think we ought to have a seat at the table in figuring out how to deploy this investment. And we said, yeah, you're right. And then they said, but it's not just us, it needs to be the community too. And they really have been very usefully and constructively pushing the city to make sure that we're doing this in the right, uh, transparent way. And I want to, I want to name that and acknowledge that and appreciate that. And in particular, those nonprofits, uh, provided the, uh, volunteers who facilitated, uh, the breakout rooms and, and made this evening's conversation possible. That's Betty Coens, Carol Teske, uh, Amren Young, Kimberly Holmes Ross, Linda Gerber, Maya Carr Ramos, Rebecca Komet, Rebecca Kakayoran, Alejandro Ibanez. Uh, thank you very much to all of you. Uh, this would obviously have been impossible without, without your, your, uh, leadership and, and facilitation. Um, and finally, I want to thank the city staff. Uh, I, I meant it when I said earlier, I've not talked to anybody, uh, whether it's, uh, on the city council or working for the city who thinks that we ought to do this in a closed internal way. There's a commitment from our whole team to take the time and devote the effort needed to make sure the public's voice is heard. And I just want to, want to thank the staff for putting in a lot of time to make sure that this afternoon's conversation went well. And for all the work that I know you're going to have to do to continue to solicit public input. Um, I think, I think it's obvious that by doing that right, we're going to wind up with a way better product for the entire, entire city. And, and I think that's something that's really worth, worth taking time for. So once again, thank you to everybody, uh, who made, uh, this conversation possible. Uh, and I look forward to a lot of continued efforts, uh, to make sure that we're doing right by our entire community throughout this process. Enjoy the rest of the day.